Richard's not here. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Um, I... Hi. Meeting's called order.
Hi, gals.
Josh is not here because he is shadowing a recruit at the U.S. Coast Guard and he was very respectful and emailed me that information, which was really awesome. And I'm gonna entertain a moment, motion to move the habits of work presentation up to the beginning of the agenda because we thought that would work better with...
Public comment?
Yes, with public comment, thank you. I am entertaining a motion to move...
I will move to move the habits of work discussion to public comment.
All right. Second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Nay.
Nay? Thank you. Hi, Richard. Thanks for coming. And also, we've been asked to add an agenda item to the action items. We need to increase our line of credit. Can I have a motion to add that to the action items?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Nay.
Opposed? Thank you. So, habits of work. Hi, Steph.
Hello. Pretty easy. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to do this first because I think, you know, it'll level the playing field a little bit. Some of us have a great deal more experience with this because we've been immersed in it for the last couple of years than the rest of you. So I thought that might be helpful and might eliminate some of the questions at the end. So you'll notice that proficiency-based grading is the bolded title there because habits of work are really in the context of our long journey towards proficiency-based grading and PBGRs. So BUHS has... Oh, first of all, I just wanted to identify a couple of language issues: standards-based, proficiency-based, competency-based. There are subtle differences depending on the system in which they are used as the identifying sort of system, but here we use them pretty much interchangeably. And the differences between them are really not relevant to this conversation at all. What they do, and I have a link in there that has an article, and I'll send this presentation out to all of you so you can access some of those. But basically, a proficiency-based, standards-based, or competency-based system is one which uses defined learning targets or outcomes against which students are measured or that they work towards. We would define our system as an assessment-based system because students' progress or understanding is measured by the grades they receive on assessments. And those assessments could be projects, papers, tests, homeworks, whatever. But it is basically their understanding or knowledge is reduced to a single grade or mark and then entered into the grade system. A standards-based system would look like the standards would be identified, the activities that students do would come under those standards, and progress or students' understanding would be reported in the area of where they are in relation to this standard or this learning goal. So does that make sense to everybody?
Could you just say again what we're... The current standard we're using is...
Well, the current system would best be defined as an assessment-based system as opposed to a standards-based system.
But we're headed towards...
We're headed towards there, and I'll explain because we are required to. It's also, I think, the best way to measure student learning. They then learn at their, you know, at the standards that they need, you know, support in or that they exceed in, they can move beyond those. So BUHS has been on this path for a very, very long time. PBGRs were developed more than eight years ago, and they were a product of a Roland grant and a real visionary thinking by one person and then a group of people who've been working on these for a long time. I hope you've all been hearing about PBGRs for that long. It's been a system in implementation, and it's long been determined that the class of 2016 was the first class to graduate with responsibility for some of the PBGRs, and I believe they have four of them. Full implementation will be with the class of 2020. Coincidentally, you'll see that the law, Act 77, and educational quality standards also used 2020 as the target date for full implementation, and that's not a coincidence. This school was one of the leaders in that area, and we were one of the go-to places. So when the state decided that this was the way that all students should be learning, they looked to the work that BUHS had been doing for a long time. And if you remember, Ed Webly was a frequent visitor at the State House and testified a lot when this law was being enacted. So while we were working in isolation on our PBGRs and developing a standards-based system, the state of Vermont enacted Act 77 in 2014, and essentially what it says is it requires all students to implement a proficiency-based graduation system by 2020. They sometimes use the term PBGR, sometimes use transferable skills, but they mean the same thing. They are overarching skills that basically transcend a content area, and they're interwoven in all areas, and they are skills like problem solving, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, communication, global understanding, technology, and a host of others. Ours, we've identified nine, and we're sticking with our nine. They look a little different, but they incorporate all the state-required proficiencies. EQS talks a lot about, and that's, I'm sorry, that's educational quality standards. The educational quality standards talk a lot about personalization for each student. They define curriculum. They set parameters around curriculum, who's in charge of curriculum, and they, basically, the most important tenet is the idea of flexible and multiple pathways and that students should have opportunities to learn outside the school building. And they encourage the career and technical education, virtual learning, and all those other things: dual enrollment, early college. So those systems existed, but now they're embedded in the law. Act 77 is really where it talks about proficiency in the curriculum. It included the sections of the law, and they also talk about credits. Most high schools define learning by selection, a number of credits that students have to earn in order to prove graduation. That's based on seat time. The Carnegie unit, they basically say you may or may not continue to use that, but any credit system must have the proficiencies embedded in the credits. So it's the proficiency meeting the standard in those areas, not just you've passed all your tests with a 70 and you were in class most days. That's what we talk about, seat time. Any questions about that?
Do we intend to use credits or not?
We... That's a big conversation. I certainly have a decision I'm gonna make in isolation. I assume this is gonna be something that we'll all talk about. Credits are useful for tracking, you know, but what does a credit really say? You know, if you earn a credit with a 70, does it mean that you understood 70% of the intended learning, that you mastered 70% of the intended learning? It's not a very clear understanding. So we could have a credit, credit... Well, I... That's... Yeah. Yeah. Or many evenings. So the Agency of Education, interestingly, realized that they passed this law, and we were all talking about these things, but there wasn't any common understanding. There hadn't been... People were kind of, you know, on their own in this. So they partnered with the Great Schools Partnership, an organization that we had been working with here, and created the Proficiency-Based Learning Series. And it was sort of an unprecedented rollout of professional development. As many as 50 supervisor reunions participated in this. It was something like 25 days last year. Joanne was there, Matt de Bloi, we had a team of teachers, elementary and high school teachers. I was there. And it was two days a month. They had three different sites in the state. So all these educators were learning on the same days at the same time. It's never happened before. I'm sure it was very expensive to do that. And it was designed to create a common understanding in these important concepts, help schools determine a plan for where they might need support, where their systems were already on their way, and where their systems weren't. And we developed a plan for implementation for 2020. That learning series is continuing this year. In fact, we just got the email about it. So one of... There were many, many, many very important activities that we went through and that we came and we brought back to our faculty. And that really started the work that we did with our faculty, a year-long collaborative professional development opportunity with the faculty about the same things. We needed to educate the faculty on what, where we should be going, how we should be developing curriculum, identifying our learning outcomes, and how we should be assessing students. What does that mean? And what do we want... How do we want students to show what they know and are able to do? You got the Ten Principles of Proficiency-Based Learning, and that's a Great Schools Partnership document. That was in the board packet, I believe? And we have enough to hand out if...
Do you want me to do that?
If you do, yeah. On the back of that, something you didn't get are... And so maybe, Joanne, make sure the board gets another set of these. There are some interesting excerpts of the most recent research around what grades should communicate, what grades should not communicate, and how pulling out student behaviors from grades is really more of a motivator than the grading students on those things. And we'll talk about... That's essentially the habits of work. That comes later. So... I've lost my place. So what should grades communicate? Essentially, grades should communicate achievement of learning goals. They should identify and communicate to the student themselves, and that's the essence of personalized learning, so the student has a very clear understanding of where they are in respect to the learning targets. They should communicate to the community, family, teachers, any stakeholder, what students know and are able to do within the content area. They should be accurate, consistent, meaningful, and supportive of learning. That's not to say that work habits and behaviors are not essential to track and monitor and assess also, but they shouldn't be combined with that content grade because they have the ability to either deflate or inflate a student grade. We call it muddying the waters. We don't know what a student knows and is able to do if combined with that content grade are points for extra credit, points deducted for late work, and all those other grading practices that we've been doing for a long, long time to motivate students. So, and I think the crux of this is the bottom sentence: For proficiency-based systems to be effective, learning progress needs to be monitored and reported separately from behavior. And that was a major takeaway from the learning, and it's a place where all, most schools in the state, if not in the country, are at right now. In the meantime, and I... Before I go this, go there. This was a district-wide group that was participating in this learning. So we were talking about what kinds of work had been done at the elementary schools. If you have seen an elementary school report card, they are standards-based. They moved to that a while ago. And they also separate these work habits from the content grade, from the standards. They call them approaches to learning. Not surprisingly, it took a little while, it took almost a whole faculty meeting to decide what we wanted to call ours, and we decided on habits of work. So it really doesn't matter because we identified them on our own, so... But what we... Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
It's appropriate that this was the Back to Future Day because...
Yes.
That's how my grade school report card was set up. We would get grades in each subject area, and then we would be reported on for our behavior. So it's pretty interesting that we're going back to that again. But the comment I wanted to make was I don't think the teachers that I've spoken to about performance to date understand how to express that. So there might be some more, you know, training.
Oh, no, there's a lot of learning to be done because, you know, moving to a completely standards-based or proficiency-based system is gonna take a lot of time and a lot of learning, this, you know, pulling apart. And I'll come to why being able to more easily identify where a student was in terms of the content, their understanding of the content, was important, and that's because of the connection to the district vision statement, which is we want to create a personalized system where we support all students. So that's the MTSS piece. And that's why, I mean, different... There are different points of entry, and that was the point of entry that made sense for our situation at the time. And this was a big conversation, district-wide and within this building. So number six and number seven in the Ten Principles of Learning are really what we were focused on about the habits of work, that academic progress and achievement are monitored and reported separately. Work habits and character traits, behaviors, attendance, class participation, and the other items you'll see on the rubric are important, and we want to teach them, we want to support them, we want to enforce them, and we want students to understand why they need to have these good habits. And for a lot of cases, we have to teach kids these habits. We have to... They don't come in knowing that there's a relationship between the practice work that the teacher assigns and their progress on test or quiz later. So we are monitoring them and we are reporting them, but we are doing so separately. And then, again, academic grades communicate learning progress and achievement, and they facilitate and improve the learning process. So the vision statement: Our district will be using a personalized learning approach within a multi-tiered system of supports in order that all students progress. Pretty simple. It's what we want to do. All students have the right, and we have the obligation, to make sure that students are moving forward in their learning. So the habits of work, this again is the proficiency-based system. We're not really there yet because the habits of work are an offshoot of developing this system where students are going to more clearly understand where they are in relation to one thing and one thing only as far as the grade, and that's their content acquisition. Where are they in terms of the intended learning? And that's so we can... And then the grade becomes our sort of view into what kinds of supports and interventions we have to create to support students. And that's what MTSS is. It's a multi-tiered system of support. We need to identify students early and continuing throughout their 12, 13 years here so we can make sure that they are leaving us career and college-ready. So finally, what are the habits of work? They are behavior... Oh, did you hand out the rubric? Okay. So those are the habits of work as we determined, and we did that through a lot of conversations about what are the behaviors that we see in students that get in the way of being successful academically and contribute to academic success. And we spent a lot of time trying to decide those. Then we spent a lot of time trying to align them to our five guidelines because our guidelines still exist. They are very important guiding principles within our school. So we identified this set of behaviors that all teachers could get behind and support. And, you know, they... That's what they are. That's our operating set of habits of work for this year. That doesn't mean they aren't gonna be revised in the future, but I think they do a good job of summing up what we want to support and what we believe students need in order to be successful. So you have the GUHS habits of work rubric. We put this... We implemented this for this year, and we've been assessing students differently. If you've looked at Power School, you see habits of work notations in there. You may also see homework, and what you should see are actual grades on homework. So if a student hands in a homework, you might see a 90 out of 100, or an 86 out of 100, or, you know, 5 out of 10, or whatever it is. What we're getting away from is the... Well, we're getting away from many things, but some teachers, and not that many, but some teachers were not... They were looking at homework, checking that it had been done sort of perfunctorily, and not correcting it, not grading it, not giving teachers or students feedback on the homework. But actually, that, those points that were given for the done homework but not necessarily correct homework or homework that reflected understanding, in some cases, had the ability to inflate the grade a little bit, so depending on how much weight it carried in the student, in the teacher's grading book. Many teachers did not do that, but there are other, you know, obvious examples. A student may not finish one assignment but then ask for extra credit and then get extra credit points on another assignment. Or the practice of taking 10 points for every day in assignment is late. That doesn't... That does nothing to reflect whether the student knew the material. It just means the student, for whatever reason, was not timely with his work. So I can give you a lot of examples of those practices that we've been doing for a long, long time because we use them to motivate students. We want to encourage those behaviors. So we entice them with a few extra points here, or we say, you know, we threaten with a deduction of a few extra points here. So I have a little video that puts this into context. It's four minutes, and I think it says it better than I can.
Can you clarify if homework is graded, is it included in the content knowledge assessment?
Yeah, it can be. Yeah. I mean, that's what we're promoting the teachers. If the teacher's actually grading the homework for accuracy, for correctness, for understanding, then that becomes a summative. And we're saying yes. In that case, you can... You should include the grade. Homework is a whole other conversation we can have, too, and homework can serve different purposes. Homework can be practice. And I might say that if it's just practice, if you're teaching someone something one day, you send them home with 10 problems to practice, is it in the student's best interest to try and maybe fail if they know they're gonna be graded? And in that case, I would say perhaps we don't want a great homework. You could do something in class to determine whether the student did the practice at home that night, a small mini-quiz, or reteaching, or teach each other. There are lots of strategies you can do to do that. Sometimes homework is reading or preparation for the next day's discussion in class then... So there are lots of ways to do that. We use homework in a lot of different ways. We had a faculty meeting, and we want... We decided that we really want to get away from the idea of calling it homework at all. It's simply work meant to move your learning forward in the class. So there's a lovely chapter from a book, Chapter 13, in the Fifteen Fixes for Grades that talk a lot about how homework shouldn't be assessed based on its purpose in class. So if it's summative, if you want students to do this because you're saving class time and you want to do that, and you're fairly certain of that, then, yeah, but then you can't be sure if they're doing the work themselves. If you're simply giving a few points for homework that appears complete, the student is motivated by those few points and not by the practice in that case. And then it doesn't matter if they did the work or if they copied off their friend on the bus. They just want to show up with a paper that looks fairly complete, unless there's some connection to that work at home. Not all students, but some students. You know, if there's not a connection to that work that they've done at home to what's gonna happen in class, there's a lot of motivation to just get it done regardless of the benefit of practice themselves. So does that make sense?
Come on.
So if you don't mind, it's a four-minute video, and it's from Casco Bay, a school in Portland, Maine. They're much further ahead than we are in this. They have standards-based grading throughout their system, and they talk a little bit about that.
At Casco Bay, we have student-based grades. We have the standards-based grades, which we've been talking about. We also have the habits of work grades, which shows all the, like, the habits of the worker, as in if you meet your deadlines, if you're...
So it's kind of about your effort, how hard you're working just to get the grade?
Yes.
And I think we purposely separate those things out because they are different things. And then, in fact, you can meet this. Some students can meet the standard. You get on and you're riding the bike. Why should I make you sit through 75 hours of little drills around bicycle riding if you already know how to ride a bike? You know, so we're really reporting out on the work itself, on that skill, on that content, right, what you've achieved. And then if you put in the habits of work, if you are working hard, we always provide more time because then it's on us. Then it's our job to teach you. If you're doing your job, then we need more time together to get you there.
Last semester, I got all, for my habits of work, I got, well, for my six classes, I got five threes, and I got one two. And the two was because I, well, it's because I wasn't studying and I wasn't, like, doing my homework on time, and that's the reason why. But all my other classes, I wasn't. You could see that by the grade that was shown.
Well, it doesn't want to continue, but I think it's given you enough of a taste of that. In the Casco Bay system, they've actually tied their habits of work grade to standards grade. So you heard them allude to the fact that if a student... A student gets more extra time to master the content if their habits of work are good. And so they end the semester or the term with an incomplete, and they get support. And actually, they get support free. There are some students who don't do well in the habits of work, aren't showing that they are trying to master the material, have to pay for summer school, or might have to come. They have something like mud school. So they have a system of interventions, which really, Joanne, is what we've been talking about. What do we need to do here to get those interventions to support students? You know, we give students one semester to learn the material, and that's it. And then we move on to another set of classes. So, you know, we need to find a way to honor the fact that, you know, learning is the constant and time is the variable. Not all students learn at the same pace. And we don't have a lot of opportunities in our very tightly blocked system of intervention. We have callback, but callback is busy, and other students are doing other things. So that's why we need to understand where students are in their learning so that we can create those interventions. Neil?
So Stephanie, you're thinking to adopt that system where a student who has great HOW but isn't making a good grade would go in sale for free, but another student might pay something like that?
No. It's just, it's interesting that they've gone to that, they've gone to that point. We have suggested the adoption of that to a certain point because I've never thought it was fair that we have academic eligibility based simply on grades when some students are working as hard as they can to master the material and they still are benched because they don't understand. So we determined, we're using the habits of work grade to determine eligibility for extracurriculars right now. So Pete is looking at those, and we kind of shifted to that last year because a lot of teachers adopted this last year already. So Pete has been doing, is looking at the habits of work grade. So if a student is, you know, essentially failing a course, but they are coming to call back, their habits of work are meeting or exceeding, and they're doing all that, then they get to play. And we're, you know, we support them as we should academically. They may just not be able to master the material, and we're doing that weekly. On the other hand, we have some students who are doing very, very well, and part of the conversation we had, Nancy, I want you to nod here, was that we have some students who are doing, we're looking at their habits of work. Their habits of work are lousy. They're neat, you know, HN. They need improvement. But they're getting 93s in their math class right now. Well, you know, the math teacher said, I'm asking my, I'm asking the question right now. My homework is a waste of this student's time, obviously. This student is mastering the material without doing my 10 practice, you know. Now, but he also, the student got referred to RRC because he's kind of bringing down the class culture, you know? So it doesn't mean, you know, maybe that he needs to be challenged more with homework or with other work, but it can't just be a nudge in the class either. So we're using those habits of work to identify those kinds of behaviors because that student ultimately will need to understand that they have to do work outside.
Maybe not.
Someday.
Maybe not.
So what we did here, we implemented the habits of work this year, and we did so carefully. We did, it wasn't a frivolous decision, and we did, it's, we had a few missteps because our reporting system, Power School, wasn't able to support the system. So we weren't able to compile grades. We had to step back and tell teachers how to do it differently. We made some major assumptions in the summer with our test classes that worked on a test class basis, but when we opened it up to live students, it didn't work as well. So there were some missteps early on. We have the reporting system in place now, and teachers are using it. As we near the quarter one mark, and, you know, there's some anxiety with, I would say especially, actually, the only, I've received two calls, but, from seniors. What will this do to seniors? Is there... Because in some classes, there is a slight difference in the way grading may have looked last year in that student's class, if that, if the student had that teacher last year to this year. And are grades going to be lower? We, again, we had a big faculty meeting last week, and I was, I wanted to hear what teachers' experiences were, and a lot of teachers said... teachers' experiences were and a lot of teachers said, actually, they're seeing higher grades because they are no longer dinging students for that late work. They're talking to students, they're wrapping around students to do that, but the grades are actually steadier because they're not losing ten points, so that. Because that wasn't motivating for students anyways. Zeros as a placeholder for a missing homework assignment, for most students, they didn't care. And they, you get so many zeros, you never crawl out of that hole. So that's not to say it's not impacting students adversely in some cases, but it, it's, you know, but a few points can make a difference. So we've had some conversations. It's been suggested to me to prepare a statement that would accompany transcripts or college applications to explain that we are in the process of changing our grading practices and a grade may, no longer includes these certain elements for some teachers. The problem is that was a practice that was not across the board. It, it sort of assumes that our grading practices were consistent in every classroom and they weren't. Teachers were free to assess, assign their own weights to things and their own percentage points for what different categories earned or, or how they influenced the grade. So it is very, what this does actually is bring some consistency to our grading practices. Now we know what a grade consists of. There are still those differences in weights, but we charged our department chairs for leading a discussion this week to bring, to create consistency within each department so that students know what a, what a particular item is worth, you know, fifteen, fifteen percent, twenty percent, forty percent, whatever it is. So I did, it, this is a, you know, an important step in that direction too because I think there shouldn't be any surprises with that. So any questions? Any, you guys want to keep me honest?
I'm grading.
Yeah, you're grading right now. Okay. Sandy, how'd I do?
Um, okay. Pretty darn good.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll place an after.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you, Stephanie. So you're, you're pushing the button of the concern that I'm hearing from community members more than two. Couple I've referred to you, I'm not sure whether they got in touch with you or not. But it really does have to do with the shift for, bound for college students right now. And I'll use an example that I heard from last week to express my concern to you on behalf of students that may be affected. Took Eva to see McGill University, fantastic place, best university in Canada, maybe, I don't know. Forty thousand students in their student body, ten thousand in the freshman class. And during the tour, we were told quite emphatically, applying to McGill is the easiest thing. They go on your grades, exactly your grades and nothing but your grades. You submit your grades, you might have to do an SAT, but the first gate through is your grades. And they go to the grades and then they make it down to the number of students they can accept and that's it. And they're looking at ten thousand people. So I'm worried on behalf of, of shortlist students, of your students, that that statement that, you know, we're assured will be written and I don't doubt it will. I'm worried that universities will actually look at that when they're faced with looking at ten thousand students and they're doing grade triage. And that little, you know, and those are all high flyers. So that little tiny increment of change reflecting, you know, an awesome student, grade nine, grade ten, grade eleven, grade twelve, what happened there, that little increment could cause them to get out, you know, not pass the first gate. That's my concern. And that's what I'm hearing.
Here's what I know about college acceptance or admissions offices. And I know it through an extensive survey we did in a school in which I previously worked because we were getting some pressure to, we were on a four-point scale and they wanted to assign a four-point three-three value to an A-plus. So what does, what do colleges know and expect? And what we learned and our, there's a network of admissions offices that college guidance councils are hooked into, and we learned from a survey of approximately a hundred and fifty colleges was that they have to recalibrate every single, every single thing they get from every single high school because we, we grade on a hundred-point scale and we don't wait classes. School down the road does a four-point three-three scale and they wait AP classes. Next school is a five-point scale. Casco Bay is a standards-based school. Every single high school does it differently. And what is the, what is the commonality is every school produces a profile. And that profile document accompanies the transcript and is really the roadmap to reading what the grades mean. The profile tells what are the highest level classes. Some schools don't have identified AP courses. They have AP equivalent courses that allow students to take the AP exam and they prepare them for it, but they're not called AP. They're called writing in a modern world or something, you know? And McGill doesn't know that writing in a modern world is the AP equivalent of VUHS's comp and lit class. So they, but there, it's identified in the profile. And then they, then they rewait the grade because they don't know if, the profile should say if a call, if a school is waiting their AP courses or their high-level courses or honors-level courses. We don't. And so they, they have to re-navigate that. They basically said, every single one of them said, they have to recalibrate every grade they get. So when they say they go by, I don't know what that means and I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm just, I'm...
Yeah, no, you, you, I don't believe in entirely.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just saying that they have to do that because otherwise it implies that every high school is doing things exactly the same. And we know that's not true.
I would say the majority of colleges that I'm looking at, I have been grading certain one of those pieces, but you all know the rest of the students resident, let's say, is really important for whether or not I do the math. People will all rather have students, not just students. So, and I understand the concern and not deny it, but there's so much more to do with that.
There's no doubt. It's, and it's not even the difference in calibration, it's the incremental change observable in the last year. That's the thing that's, that, that I'm hearing about, so.
The school profile that you reference, how does that relate to the, the suggestion of having a statement about habits of work? Is the profile already reflective of the proficiency-based grading? And is there the necessity for a separate statement?
You know, we went around this, I revise the profile every year and I did it earlier this year and, because it's ready to get loaded to the Common App website or whatever. And we didn't include it at that time because the guidance council said, it's, that's not about, it's not on the transcripts. You know, the, the transcript is just the grade and not the habits of work. You're not including that, so why, you know, why bother essentially indicating that a grade may be lower because it's now reflecting a student's content knowledge and not being inflated or deflated by these other elements? So we decided at that point not to. The statement that I've been asked to write and that I'm happy to write would be something that I think students might want to submit on their own with their, with their transcripts or with their application. But we can, we can add it, we can say that we're in the process of, of doing this and the statement that I thought was that, that I was thinking about writing at the time before being talked out of it was referencing the law and saying that we are moving towards a standards-based grading environment and we are now separating. So the grade simply reflects content acquisition based on our assessment system. So I, I, you know, I, I don't know, I can see how it might, it might hurt a student as well, that statement. So I, I'm, I, I don't know whether it's the answer or not.
So if I may follow up because I touched on two points. One is that if colleges are all looking at profiles, just from my perspective, it would seem prudent that our profile be reflective of what we're doing and there not be some separate piece of paper that takes a separate effort for somebody to have to read when they're already reading umpteen thousand applications.
CBU's been doing this for longer and they make no mention of it on their profile. They went to this last year. So that, you know, that's an example, I know that because I check schools that are doing this.
And that was going to be my next question. We're not alone in this. If the whole state is moving towards this, what's the, what's the comp or the comparative, sorry, what's the comparative? What are our colleagues doing and what's the feedback that they're getting from parents and admissions counselors? You know, we shouldn't have to reinvent the wheel.
I tried to get the profile up, but my internet went down.
And I think what you're, what you're hearing, I hope, is through the questions and perhaps lack of questions is that I think that there's probably good support for the direction in which we're heading and a concern that we not be placing any hurdles for our students to get accepted into the schools to which they're seeking to go. And that's the line we're trying to figure out.
Yep. And I, I don't want to, I don't want to be an obstacle as well. You know, we had a, a conversation a few months ago or so about, I think it was when I brought the VSAC longevity study out and about whether our students, according to that measure, were being successful in college. I think it was their two-year, or three-year, or four-year success rate or something. And the conversation I remember was, how do we know students are being successful when they get to college? We don't. The answer is we don't. But in my mind, if we know, we've been accused, all high schools have been accused of grade inflation. And we've heard that, you know, the statistics say like fifty percent of all students from American high schools need remedial classes in order to be successful in even entry-level, in entry-level college classes. I, I don't have the statistics. But, you know, our work here, and it'll take a number of years, is to prevent that from happening, is, is to make sure that our students are graduating with the skills they need to be successful in college and that their grades reflect that. And but if, if the grades reflect that, from early on, we know what we need to do to support them, to make sure that by the, you know, when they come in as seventh graders, what do they need to be successful by the time they leave as twelfth graders?
Does anyone else have a question?
I'm, I'm going to have to transition to another board meeting in a minute. I did want to make a comment and that is, I did attend the session all year with, with the team of people from the ANWSU. And one of the things that we were supposed to pay attention to is really rolling this out in the public. I think we could have done a better job with that. We have communicated in writing, on our website, to students and to parents. But I think a conversation or opportunities for conversation really is deserved in a situation like this because this cha, this change does affect kids for different reasons. I do want to say that Stephanie's very open to having individual conversations with parents. We have had one or two at this point. So if any board members do hear from community members and from parents, please encourage them to, to meet with the administration because there could be some opportunities for us to work through some unique circumstances. So, thank you.
Okay. Um, I think we should move on unless, to a public comment. Yes, Kate?
I would like to read a statement to the board.
Please do.
Not as easy being on this side sometimes on the table. And I'm reading this to hopefully continue this open conversation with all respect to Stephanie and to the teachers. I don't know how many teachers were on the board committee this summer that did the hard work in trying to get where they are today. But I, with that said, I would like to share some concerns with the board that I have about the effect that the newly instituted grading policy called habits of work is having on our students, especially our seniors who are about to apply to college. Please understand that I am not here to debate at all the merits of or the future role habits of work has in education. What I am here to discuss is the impact it is having on our seniors' grades. The first quarter represents one of the most critical nail-biting quarters of a student's sixteen quarters spent here at UHS. For all of our students applying to college, these first-quarter grades will accompany their college applications and become one in several factors that colleges will look at to decide acceptance as well as merit scholarships, which equate to monies, very important monies that students are competing for and counting on. In all of my travels over the last year, and I put many miles both in the air and in our car, to colleges from Maine to Virginia, not once did I hear, see, or read about colleges being interested in or concerned with the students' work of habit grades. It usually boils down to the numbers, as Neil suggested, GPA, SAT, ACTs, et cetera. Also, for the last four years, these seniors have been held to what VUHS calls the five guidelines. I'm sure you're all familiar with them. The fifth being to challenge oneself. So last spring, they met with their school counselors, set academic rigor high, and picked classes that they thought would challenge them so as to, so as to appeal to prospective colleges. In August, they walked through our front doors and had a new grading policy dropped in their laps. Grades would be comprised of mainly quizzes and tests. And let's face it, there are a lot of bright students in our building and halls that are not great test takers. Most importantly, there was no prior communication. There was no lead time, no warning, no chance to change courses, and no interest in gathering student or parent feedback before implementing this. Things were suddenly just different here. After four years of having their hard work, their timely completion of assigned homework, and their efforts to actively engage in class be acknowledged by teachers as a percentage of their overall grade, the rules of grading that applied to them were suddenly very different. And they were stripped of that benefit. The first time that I became, as a parent, aware of this new grading policy was through a letter that came home along with a slew of other notices in August, like if the school nurse could dispense Tylenol or Motrin to my daughters. At that time, I had no idea of the impact that this new policy would have. From my research, it looks as though the first time the board itself heard about this new grading policy was at the September fourteenth meeting, when it was very briefly mentioned and quickly tabled for discussion at a later meeting tonight. Other research led me to scratch my head when I read the VUHS Student Parent Handbook for two thousand fifteen, sixteen. And on page three, came across what is called the Family-Student-Faculty-Staff Learning Compact, which reads, and this is what it looks like, it's page two of the handbook. "It is critical that families and schools work together to help students achieve academic standards. Through a process that includes teachers, families, students, and community members, the following are agreed-upon roles and responsibilities that we as partners will carry out to support student success in school and in life." And I'd like to read a few of the bullets that are under the three sections. Under the students section, it requires, "Students will try to do their best in work and behavior. Students will bring all necessary materials and supplies, completed assignments, and homework to school each day." And under the parental section of this agreement, it says, "Families will maintain open lines of communication by sharing hopes, ideas, and concerns about their students' education." Well, I can say very openly, I am very concerned for all the seniors here at VUHS who are planning on applying to college within the next few weeks. If I can put it in very simple, boiled-down terms, our kids, our seniors, and I'm sorry, Ava, juniors too probably, have been playing under a certain set of grading rules for the last four years. And nine weeks before their academic World Series, the roles of the game were changed on them, except the fans were never made aware. If this policy is attempting to standardize grading, may I suggest that the cart is actually being put before the horse in this case. There is no standardized teaching style, no standardized guideline for quantity of assessment or type of assessment. No, if you'll have it, habits of teaching standards, which are clearly discussed if you really read the Ten Principles of Proficiency-Based Learning, which was handed out to you tonight. Learning, which was handed out to you tonight. Within the same department, some teachers may give multiple quizzes every week, some teachers give unit quizzes after several days on one subject and lots of practice, and some teachers give just one chapter test. There is no standardization on the provider end. And ultimately, we therefore have no real clarity as to how this new grading policy will affect the success of our seniors. Had this new grading policy been phased in or rolled out differently, starting with, say, a freshman class, I argue that it would allow everyone to get their heads around it. So tonight, with two days left before the close of the quarter this Friday, I would encourage that this board and the administration take a step back and possibly consider some more creative options to, say, grandfather seniors from the limitations of and being penalized by this new grading policy. It would be a wonderful example of adults practicing two of the other five guidelines stated, respect for and kindness to our students, because it is the students here who are getting caught in the crosshairs of policy. To me, the newly minted assignment of HE, which stands for exemplary habits of work, should really stand for a hollow and an empty pat on the back, because that is really all that those two letters are doing for our college-bound seniors today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kate. So, we need to move on to reports, and I'm aware that we've got a time problem. And you guys are first. Could I ask you to try to minimize it as much as possible? I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
Yeah, I certainly want to hear what you have to say.
So, for kind of the past month since we last met, what's been going on in the school? Tomorrow is the Class of 2016's Walk-A-Thon. This year, we are walking with the cause of teen depression and suicide prevention, and we have raised close to $3,000 for this cause. And the money hopefully will keep rolling in after we walk. So, we're walking to Rivers Bend, kind of via Green Street. We'll leave the school tomorrow at eight. And we would like to thank Leigh Shory, even though she's not here, for all of her hard work and contribution that she puts into the Walk-A-Thon every year. As for seniors, the early decision deadline is November first for college, and college visits are currently being conducted in the guidance office. Representatives from different universities, primarily in New England, send people to come meet with students. It's a wonderful opportunity for kids to get to know all the different options out there. This past Monday, there was a meeting in the library that guidance put on for parents that provided information about the college application process, followed by a VSAC financial aid meeting for parents as well. Seniors are currently working on a formal contract to present to the administration regarding senior privileges. We'll be ready to do so after our Walk-A-Thon on Thursday. As you know, Karen Jordan left about two, almost three weeks ago, and a new teacher is set to take her position as of November second. And yearbook info is being taken in. The deadline is November first, so students are sending in pictures and quotes and everything. And a lot of thanks to Anissa Martin for single-handedly taking on all the yearbook and tasks that it, and challenges that it presents. PSATs were also conducted last Wednesday for sophomores and juniors.
Sure. So, for sports, just really quickly, the girls and boys varsity soccer had their playoffs yesterday. Both teams lost, so Virginia's soccer is done for the year, but we are moving on. The rowing team recently won the New England Championships and are headed down to another championship of this nature on Friday. The musical is in full swing. The play dates are November nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first, and tickets will go on sale soon. As for academics, the quarter ends this Friday, as Kate mentioned, and midterms are being taken this week, so students are really pushing through that.
So, there's a lot going on. It's a very busy time of year. I'm a week away from clicking the send button on my college application for early decision, George Washington University, down in Washington, DC.
Good luck.
I know, fingers crossed, fingers toes, hairs, everything else.
Good luck. So, before we move on, Joanne's not here. I just, I want to reiterate, Stephanie and Jay, that it's really, I really think it's important to the board, and forgive me if I step in if I'm speaking out of turn, but that our seniors don't get penalized because of the lack of information that they and their parents had, because we didn't roll this out as well as we probably could have. So, I just, I want to say again, I really want to make sure we, as best we can, we don't provide any punitive results of this to our students, especially when they're going to college. Superintendent's report, does anybody have questions? She's not here. Okay. Principals' report, any questions?
Can I say, were you given a hiring memo or hiring notice?
An interesting process, because the candidates actually led the high school chorus as a sample teaching, but we did hire, offer, and our offer was accepted for a woman named Jennifer Carpenter, and she'll be starting November second. She's finishing up a long-term sub-stint up, I think, in Mississauga right now. So, she'll be joining us November second. She's very qualified. The level of difficulty of the music did not scare her off, as it did one of the candidates. So, we're pretty excited to have her on board, and the students reacted positively to her when she taught them, or led the chorus, so.
Thank you.
Quick question about that. So, I think I read that the teacher knows all the material that Ms. Jordan had planned to do, or something like that, right?
Well, there's four pieces of music that Ms. Jordan had started with the chorus. There may be more than that, but there are at least four pieces that she will be able to pick up and work with right now. We have the student leaders in the chorus, or the, I don't know what they're called, there's a name for them.
Officers.
Officers are helping to lead the chorus, because we don't have a qualified sub in that place.
The statement struck me, because, you know, there may be an opportunity for the students to articulate some other forms of choral music that they might enjoy to perform.
Oh, absolutely. But I think they're in the, you know, they've had eight weeks. Step in here, guys. You guys have been working on this music, right? That's what I understand. So, I would hope that in the future, there, you know, it broadens our repertoire of music, for sure.
We do have a set. Our concert date is set.
Right.
And our music is set. But we, there may be some modifications that are going to need to happen before then.
But moving forward, this person would be in charge of selection, you know, according to her interests and expertise?
And forgive my lack of knowledge, but aren't we supposed to okay hiring at the board level?
I don't believe so. I've been giving you a sort of an update of the person's credentials, but hiring is done by the superintendent?
Okay, so we don't have anything to do with that? Yeah, I know. That's why, that's what I was thinking.
And there's absolutely no concern on my part about the teachers just process. That's exactly what I just said.
You weren't given a hiring memo, though. It wasn't in your packet?
No. Business manager.
So, you.
Oh, hi.
Hi, Tanya.
I snuck in. I'm sorry. I sent out, or actually, Joanne sent out, the year-end numbers for, that were adjusted for FY15. They came in much better than I predicted a month ago, only because you received in more special ed reimbursement and extraordinary reimbursement than I had actually anticipated. So, looking right now, you were over-expended by a hundred and thirty-one, almost a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in your, on your expenditures. You received almost a hundred thousand dollars more than what you budgeted in revenues. So, your estimated fund balance right now for FY15 is thirty-three thousand, three seventy-nine.
Negative.
Negative, in the hole, deficit, which.
That's not bad.
No.
Yes. No, I get that.
Point zero three. And I did calculate that just before I came here, too, because I wanted to make sure I knew that.
Oh, no, no, no. It's.
Now, please remember, this does not take into account the deficits in the supervisory union that you would have to pay fifty-one percent of when the finals come in.
That's, right.
Which is an additional, the way it's calculating right now with a total estimate is between special ed and the SU office, it would be about sixty-seven thousand dollars more. So, that would be a hundred and six thousand dollars.
Just for clarification, the deficit will be a line item. The deficit for VUHS will be a line item, but the deficit for the supervisory union will be included in the one line that we get, the VUHS one line that we get, right? What I'm trying to say is, there is not going to be another line for the SU deficit when we present to the voters.
No, there won't.
It'll be rolled into.
It will be a total deficit, because you will have to cut a check to A and W to make them whole.
And that's going to be on, in that line item that is at the supervisory union?
Yes.
Okay. Would you take a minute or two and tell me, if I take the net education spending and subtract the revenues, I get five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars in surplus. How do we get to that thirty-three?
Well, you have a budget. For instance, I'll start with the revenue, for the expenditures. You budgeted ten million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, twenty, yeah, a hundred, ten thousand, ten million, one twenty in expenditures.
Right.
You expended ten million, two fifty-one.
Right.
So, you over, but you over-expended your budget and expenditures by a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
I see that.
Okay?
Okay.
Your revenues, you budgeted ten million, seven oh seven, which included recouping five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars worth of deficit.
Okay.
Okay. You collected ten, eight oh six.
Okay.
So, you had, you, you received ninety-eight thousand dollars more than what you budgeted.
Okay.
Your expenditures were a hundred and one, a hundred and thirty-one thousand, minus the ninety-eight gives you a total of thirty-three thousand dollars still in the hole. You just can't take the actuals minus the actuals to get, because you also made a.
Yeah, I made that mistake, I realize. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? I have another question. Does anybody else have a question? Wait. We're still on the. We can look at either. We're talking about the report in general, so then there's two. You want to, you have a question, Jeff?
My suggestion is, in the context of working on the supervisory union's audit committee, and the FY16 report doesn't necessarily reflect some of the samples for reporting that we've been looking at and suggesting be adopted on supervisory union-wide basis. So, I just want to note that, and I also note that I don't believe the budget summary for the period of July through October isn't footing. I believe there's a formula problem in what we've been presented. So, I don't want to accept this report as part of our meeting tonight. It doesn't appear accurate to me.
He's talking about the second column on the top of the fiscal year sixteen. If you add up the one point four seven, and you go down, it does not add up to the one point eight six six. Okay. Okay. So, that should definitely foot the next time we get the report. Additionally, I had asked last time for a financial analysis of the balance that remains in the general instruction categories. It's my understanding that general instruction is generally benefits and salaries, and those are encumbered. So, I'm not, I don't understand why we have four hundred thousand dollars worth of.
General instruction includes supplies, books.
Right. Okay. So, what I wanted was, what is that four hundred and seven thousand dollars made up of? Is it field trips at a hundred thousand dollars plus so on, so on, so on, so on, so on? We have a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar deficit in general instruction for 2015, and I don't want that to happen again. And one of the, and so, looking at the numbers and making sure they make sense, to me, will help us make, ensure that that doesn't happen again. Because general instruction, unless there's some odd thing going on, it should pretty much balance out. We should be spending approximately what we budgeted, unless there's some big issue. So, anyway, I am asking again for numbers that add up to that four oh seven, five fifty-six. Obviously, that number will change when we get our November meeting, but I would appreciate that, as well as an explanation about the debt services. I'm not quite sure why we have a sixty-five thousand dollar balance in debt services. That seems like that should all be encumbered as well.
Can I add something here? I'm just worried about the statement of the hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars deficit in the 2015 budget in the area of general instruction. That is almost extensively through the errors that were made in the salary figures. And so, if you look at the beginning balance of the budget, and then the salary figures, they were all entered incorrectly. So, that's where that comes from. It wasn't from overspending in any one area, and I take that personally, because that's an area that I'm definitely in control of, so.
There was also the ninety-eight thousand dollar bill back from special ed.
Yeah. So, that, those are areas, I mean, that's significant. It made it sound as if we overspent in that area, and that is not true. We didn't.
Correct. It was a budgeting issue with salaries and benefits.
Okay. And then, I still think that supports what I'm asking for, right?
Yes.
Which is, what makes up that balance?
But it wasn't overspending.
Okay. I retract that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I worked very hard to make sure that wasn't the case last year.
Yes. Okay. Anybody else? Facilities committee.
We had, we talked about linking the facilities planning spreadsheet with priorities to the operations and maintenance plan. I haven't met with Bob yet to see how to do that in Google Docs, but that's my plan. in Google Docs, but that's my plan. We also talked about performance contracting and net metering. We didn't have any recommendations come out of committee for that. And we also talked about current facility, facilities issues. At, as of the date of the meeting, we were talking about the 2001 roof, the guidance office envelope, and the door and the turret.
Are there minutes?
No action came out of committee.
I'm sorry?
No action came out of committee.
Okay. Are there minutes to the meetings, Kurt? Are they posted?
Yes, we have draft minutes. They haven't distributed them yet to the committee, committee members, but Jeff has drafted them and they look pretty accurate to me. We'll have them distributed before our next meeting.
Okay. And, when is your next meeting?
It's the first Friday of every month.
Thanks.
So whatever that is on the calendar, November 3rd.
Right.
Someone's whispering.
First Friday. At seven thirty, is it, in the morning?
Yes.
At the, okay. So one of the things that happened between this, this meeting and last meeting was that George Gardner was in a meeting with Ernie Parmeau, and he indicated that VUHS has some sort of a relationship with this new solar array. And, and I'm just wondering if you can speak to that? Is that coming out of the committee?
That's reported in the district, in Joanne's district report.
Yeah. So we talked about it in the committee, but didn't have any, anything come out of the committee for that.
So, so when he says we're, the, VUHS is all signed up, he's not speaking?
That's correct. He is.
We're in communication.
Yeah. He is not accurately portraying the relationship.
We have not signed anything.
He is actually misrepresenting the relationship.
Yeah, it was upsetting, concerning.
So our board has a member representing the board in discussions with Tony Parmeau?
No, he was at a Rotary meeting?
Okay. That's it.
He was at a Rotary meeting? No, that, no.
Understood.
Yeah, he was just surprised by it because he hadn't heard anything about it. So.
Well, it's good that he's checking.
Right.
Now he knows. But we did, we did talk about the net metering agreement, but we didn't come out with any recommendation from that committee meeting.
Do you think we're possibly going to save some money in our electric bill at eighty-five hundred dollars a month?
I'm not at liberty to say.
I see. And is there a particular reason why you're not at liberty to say?
If you read her thing.
What's that?
Joanne seems to think so.
There is a potential for savings, yes. There also needs to be discussion regarding the agreement, some legalities in there that we.
I'm just suggesting, in the interest of time, we will go through this in the supervisory union meetings.
Okay.
The one thing I'd like to append on the facilities committee update, just so there's no surprise next month, we are moving down the path to suggest issuing a request for proposals for performance contracting. That would come before the board probably in November.
Mm-hmm.
And the theory behind performance contracting is that we would be seeking proposals for work that would result in reduction in heating costs and electrical use. And the contractors who perform that work finance that work. We use the savings in electrical and heating costs to amortize the cost of that work. So it's not an immediate savings in the operating budget. It would be a reallocation of current expenditures to be able to pay the capital costs associated with those improvements. So I, very brief, will go into it in more detail when we come back with a specific proposal.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Hanford's, Richard?
This, last Wednesday we met and they're rolling out a new logo. We had a group of major discussions. So that was the new communication. It's going to be out there mainly because they're, they have found out many of their literature has got several different logos. There's not one set. They're coming out with, they've designed it. We've approved the logo, which is a big, with double C. It has some more graphic aspects in it, and it's going to be on the website that they're developing. It will be probably rolled out before the first of the year. And the other big news is that the Department of Ag gave the center their fast, fresh freezing apparatus. So local farmers are going to be able to use that to freeze their crops and be able to sell them throughout the year.
That's cool.
It is. It's an amazing piece of machinery.
Thank you. Any questions? Finance committee. We met, we, on the second Monday at three thirty and went through many of the bills. We have some questions, and those will be to Joanne as soon as possible. Tomorrow is my hope, that I'm going to be able to carve out some time to do that. We, I have just some clarification issues. We do have a rather large voucher warrant. It's one point nine seven million. But the majority, or a good chunk of that, one point three seven five million was a six hundred and seventy thousand dollar payoff for our line of credit, excuse me, that was probably the tax anticipation note. We had a, the four hundred and ten thousand dollar repayment for the note that we okayed, which was a short-term note. I think we okayed it in August. And then there was also two months worth of Addison Northwest Supervisory Union fees, which is at a hundred, or three hundred and three, almost three hundred and four thousand dollars. So if you remove those, it ends up being, regular expenditures is about five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And we'll vote on that when we get to the action items. Audit committee? Oh, any questions? Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that six hundred and seventy thousand is your bond for your capital improvement.
Thank you, thank you.
It's not your line of credit.
Right. I appreciate that. Any other questions? Audit committee.
In the interest of time, I suggested for an audit committee report since the supervisory union will be following and we'll do it there.
All right. Anybody have any objections to that? Who's on the Act Forty-Six study committee?
I'm sorry.
We don't have, that's right. We don't have any representation to be.
So just we do same.
I'm sorry. Ignore it. Move it.
No, suggest we do exactly what Jeff just recommended.
Yes. Got it. Because we're going to be talking about that, the supervisory union. Okay, action items. Approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. Any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Pass, thank you. Approval of bills and directors' orders. I will entertain a motion to approve the bills and directors' orders in the amount of one million, nine hundred seventy thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Any opposed? Thank you. Policy matters.
I'd like to move to defer policy matters to the following meeting. Is there any reason we need to do this now? Joanne, we're having one.
Since we have a line of people waiting.
I, I.
Is there any, just while I have the talking stick, is there anything else on the agenda we must accomplish tonight through action items?
Increasing the line of credit, for sure.
And the member.
And the member agreement. I'll entertain a motion to, oh, wait, we have a motion on the floor to move in a second.
Could there be just brief discussion? Just brief discussion on this? Joanne, I just want to confirm with you that deferring is what we want to do, or should we acknowledge receipt tonight so that it counts as the first reading and that we can have more detailed discussion at either supervisory union or at the second reading next month?
That's a better idea, Jeff.
So could I amend your motion that we acknowledge the first reading of these policies, having been provided with them, and we defer any discussion this evening?
Yep.
Your, okay. Glory, you're, you've got that?
Yep.
Okay. One vote on the amended motion.
It's a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, thank you.
Okay, you're okay with that.
Okay. All those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, thank you.
To approve bowling.
Bowling. Can we approve bowling? I'll entertain a motion.
Because I want to talk about it, since it has to go tonight.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what you're saying, Neil. Tell.
I've made a motion to approve the member-to-member.
Thank you, thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Whoa.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's paying the four hundred bucks?
Booster.
Who's playing, how about another?
Oh, okay. Understood.
My daughter.
You're paying, you're making a donation to the boosters, right?
Well, yeah.
And I ask just because this is brand new. Never seen a member-to-member for bowling before, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, thank you. Increasing the line of credit, what are we asking?
Sure. At the beginning of the year, you can remember that we didn't have a budget approved. So I could only go out for a very small line of credit compared to what you usually get. I did not receive the paperwork from the bank for everybody to sign tonight, but they have approved an amount of, if I'm remembering correctly, it's right around eight hundred thousand dollars to your line of credit that you currently have. And the reason being is we're still waiting, you have a cash flow issue, and we have that balloon payment of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars that is due November 1st. So I, we need to get you cash available now. The middle of November, you'll have cash available from taxes.
So what do you need from us?
We just.
We need approval, but we also need a dollar amount coming.
I'm pretty, I can check to see if it's in my email. I think it, he said eight hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if that was the exact number or not. Hold on.
Well, I'm just working on that. Is there a comment from the public?
Sure, Phil.
There's no way to say this about something rude, and I don't need to, but the SU meeting was scheduled to start about fifteen minutes ago. I don't think you guys thought of what they were going to do. I'd like to throw out that there's an option to suspend your meeting until after the supervisory union, so they don't have to wait another twenty. And I say that, of course, with the utmost respect, and I will just take it that way.
Yes, no, we're done with this, with this.
It is a total of straight eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to increase our line of credit by eight hundred thousand dollars. Second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Second. Discussion.
I would like to have this topic put on the agenda for next month so that we can talk about how we're using these lines of credits with respect to our taxation cycle. I feel like I need to understand it in case I get questions about it. I kind of understand it in a general sense, but it seems to be coming with a higher level of frequency at this point, so. If that works.
So you and I will talk more specifically about adding what you want for the agenda.
Okay.
Behind the seat.
And if you have other knowledge in the finance committee that I need and don't have, we can talk about it later, and that's fine.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Could you confirm what the total amount is? If we're, all we're voting on is an increase?
The total would be one point nine million dollars.
Is that?
Four hundred thousand covered the remainder of the FY '15. Seven hundred thousand was currently being used right now, and eight hundred is the add-on.
Okay. Is that, is that up or down from other years?
That's very consistent with other years.
Okay.
This is maybe the presentation kind of thing that I'd like to understand and be able to see at the next meeting.
Yes, and please remember that the four hundred thousand dollars that we paid off, we used the four hundred thousand to pay off the line of credit for '15. We have since paid that four hundred thousand dollars off in that. So really, your line of credit to be paid off at the end of the year will be one point five million.
Okay.
And is it, my, excuse me, is my understanding that it's, even though we got the line of credit, eight, it's six is what we're needing.
Six seventy. Yes. We won't draw down the whole thing unless we need it.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's any other discussion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Sorry, Bill.